So, good morning and welcome to the November 2nd meeting of the Franklin County Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Chair Dunn. Vice Chair Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Okay, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any correspondence or organizational business? Any public comment?
Yes.
Okay. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. When you come up, would you please state your name and your address?
David Reeves.
David Reeves, 2226 Idaho, Winnebago. I'm the president of the Power of the Past and I wanted to give you guys a little report on our show in September. And thank you for helping us out on the free dumping. The visitor center helped us a lot. They done our exhibitor bags up for us and that was greatly appreciated. And then we got a grant through them to help on the advertising and stuff like that. But I wanted to tell you, we had, we don't know about our visitors because they don't sign in or anything, but our, our visitors don't, but our exhibitors, we had them from seven different states. And we had Missouri, California, Iowa, Virginia, Texas, Nebraska, Oklahoma, and Kansas. So, we got quite a few people in. And the best we can figure, we had 54 to 5,500 people there. So, that was a really good turnout for us. You know, it was really nice. We had probably, well, the best we could count, which is hard to count them, but we had around 350 tractors. We featured eight this year. And next year will be our 28th show and we'll be featuring John Deere. And we just had a really good show. I mean, it turned out good. Everybody, I tell you, the community around here is great on helping support you, the businesses downtown and all that. And, you know, we couldn't do it without everybody's support. But I just wanted to come in, thank you, and tell you we appreciated it. So, that's all I have.
I was down there, it was a hot day, but you had great weather for the week.
We had great weather and everything went fine.
I missed my phone call, though, about the tractor giveaway, but.
Yeah, well, I think your number got mixed up.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
But there was a little story about that, the giveaway tractor. We bought it from a lady up by Lawrence. Her husband was a member and he passed away. And so, we bought his tractor and fixed it, saw it up and gave it away. And we drew for it. A lady from Hutcheson won it and it ended up being his sister.
Really?
And she'd been there Saturday and bought tickets and his sister won the tractor back. So, it went back home, it went to family.
Well, that's awesome.
That was real neat.
But she can have it.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Jim Wallace.
Jim Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road. I'm not sure if the RMH Advent Health has gone into legal matters yet. But anyway, I'd like to. I'd like to thank Sandy Stannard and Carl Kelsey for bringing these issues to light. I'd also like to know where one can find out who's on the RMH or Advent Health, whichever one, the county oversees, Board of Directors and other staff that they might be connected with and if they were appointed or elected.
Jane, if you goes to your office, can you get that information?
It's in the minutes from last week.
In the minutes from last week? Okay.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Norm Woogie.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Norm Woogie. I live at 3790 Pony Road. I guess we only have three here today. Oh, well, I thought we voted in five. With all respect, I strongly disagree with your presentation of what I can say and what I cannot say. I would think that that warning is to respect what I can say and what I cannot say. There are people that strongly believe in that First Amendment. And there is actually a $500,000 lawsuit on the Second Amendment of what can be done. I am guaranteed by the Constitution of what I can say. And you guys are kind of low on the list compared to the state and the federal government. And the federal government guarantees me that right. It's in the Constitution and we live by that Constitution. At least we as citizens should be guaranteed the respect of what we can say. And there are restrictions of what you can say. You can't threaten somebody, you know, there are restrictions. But that presentation of what I can say and what I can't say needs to be looked at your console. And I'm sure that he's aware of the Constitution. There is a lot of murmuring going around of what is the problem with the hospital. I did some research on Ole Miss Medical. That's, first of all, the Ole Miss Medical is a nonprofit organization. The CEO makes $1,750,000 a year, nonprofit by the state. Someone needs to get with the program and get control of this hospital or get out. Just, you know, this murmuring and not doing anything. You guys supposed to. But anyway, there are too many, there are too many levels of committees that water the whole thing down. You guys supposed to have the talents and the smarts to either fix it or get out. Your track was proximity park and hired people, just gives a lot of rhetoric. Get with the specifics. They say, oh, there's a guy, there's a, somebody interested in it. These things are going down. That, and we should be entitled because we, as taxpayers, have made a huge investment in that proximity park. We, as people out here, would like to see results and not be entertained with a bunch of rhetoric and et cetera by that person in charge. It seems like everything going to hell. Let's get with the program.
That's it?
That's it, okay. For our consent agenda this morning, we have the minutes from the meeting on October 26. Claim vouchers in the amount of $1,242,561.64. Tax change orders in the amount of minus $7,502.60. Payroll in the amount of $1,214,765.20. Special payroll in the amount of $1,794.44. And solicitation of bids for culverts. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
All right.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
All right, our first order of business is to consider for approval of the Franklin County 2023 holiday schedule. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have the 2023 proposed holidays in front of you. I haven't made very many changes as to what we've had for the last several years. The only exception to that would be the Christmas holidays. For the last two years, 2021 and 2022, the holidays have fallen over a weekend. So, we've only had one day off for the Christmas holiday. But I went back and looked historically at what we had had and it looked like two days off was what was the norm for the Christmas holiday. 2017 was the last time the holidays fell on the same days they'll fall in 2023 for Christmas. So, I took what we had done for 2017, did the same thing for 2023. And then the other thing that's in there is the floating holiday, which we've been doing for the last several years in place of Columbus Day. So, that's really all I have and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
I guess my only question, has there been issues with the floating, just using the floating holiday in the past?
No, there hasn't.
I mean, complaints one way or another?
Well, no, it's actually been very popular.
Okay.
Yeah. We've learned that it's much.
I know when I served as a union steward, once in a while we'd use that floating holiday if it made it easier at a regular, if it fell to where you could make a long weekend versus work a day, holiday, back to work again.
Right.
You know, but as long as everybody's okay with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, no, it's popular and as Amy said, this is the same number of holidays that we did last year. So, this is not unprecedented. It's pretty typical.
Pretty much the same as the state of Kansas.
Right.
And it actually is better for the public because it gives us one more day that we're open.
Right.
For the public and then still be able to do their business, so.
I suppose in future, if we do have an issue, we always have that opportunity to lock that day in somewhere if we want to.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion otherwise?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule for 2023 holidays. Second.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, our next two order of business items are David Lee, one is considering improving a tire bid.
Commissioners, this was a little bit smaller bid than we usually do just to tide us over through the end of the year. We submitted, or solicited bids from five different companies. We received three bids in return, although one of the bids came in late and so they were not considered. They missed the deadline for that. So, we do have two bids. Pomp's Tire Service provided the best price for all four bids for a total of $13,768.99. And staff is recommending moving forward with that, with that bid.
Is the winner of the bid somebody we had before?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And I will also mention that at the KAC conference, I visited with another vendor that will be on our list in the, after the first of the year, whenever we do a larger order. So, we'll have another firm, another vendor to provide prices for us.
Too bad it's email and they still got it in late.
Yep.
I mean, you know, it's not like they can blame the postal service, so if we don't have any other questions, then put down. Affirmative motion would read, I make a motion to award tire bids number one, two, three, and four to Pomp's Tire Service in the amount of $13,768.99.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
And the next order of business is to consider declaring various items as surplus.
So, we have a county resolution, actually, that describes the procedures that we have to follow to dispose of surplus property. We did this in my time here back in 2020, I believe it was. We did this very same process. I reached out to all of the departments and asked them to provide a list of surplus items that they would like to include this time around. And got information back from the Public Works Department, the Health Department, Information Technology, the Appraiser's Office, and also the Ambulance Department. And a list of those items has been provided for you. I don't have a total. I know IT has been, you know, they've got quite a, quite a long list. These are all items that they have, they've upgraded new technology and replaced computers and those sorts of things. And so, these items are essentially taking up space and not items that we will be utilizing going forward. The same could be said with the Health Department's washer dryer combo, the Appraiser's Office 2004 Chevy Tracker. EMS has got a couple of vehicles. And then the Public Works Department has a few items as well. And so, we would like to declare these as surplus and with the intention of using an auction service to handle the auction for us. As people participate in the auction and if they are successful, the money that is returned will go to each one of these departments, you know, for their items will be reimbursed. And so, it's a pretty easy process, really, for us. The Auction House will do all the coordination. We just have to provide the titles and that sort of thing once we receive payment.
Any questions?
I don't know. I think we, I was here when we did it.
That's for. This is something that we do every few years. I've found, you know, records going back. Obviously, we have a resolution that dictates how we do this and we're following that resolution.
Well, it went really well.
Yeah.
Of course, it was a really nice sunny day that day, too, so that always helps. But it seemed like it, we did it before it worked okay, so.
We don't actually have a physical sale. It's all online.
Yeah, it's all online and the, we'll use Gavel Roads, which is the same outfit that we used a couple of years ago. They come down and they will take pictures of all the different items and they will post that to their website. They will handle all of the calls that come in about the respective items. So, that, in years past, it was our staff that fielded all those calls from prospective buyers. And so, through this, this company, we don't have to handle those random phone calls. If there's something very detailed, we may have to be involved, but primarily that the Gavel Roads will take care of it. And they handle the whole process and send us a check and coordinate with us on getting the items picked up.
Okay, an affirmative motion in support of this would be, I make a motion declaring the attached list of items as surplus to be auctioned. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
Yes.
Sorry, I misunderstood your deal.
That's all right.
But a long time ago, they did do a regular auction. But I can see where this would be a lot easier.
Absolutely. Okay, so then that concludes our business, so we'll start with staff reports. Derek.
Yeah, just a few things real quick. Got a teleconference this afternoon regarding the tax sales, so we are making progress on that. It'll be a long time before it actually gets filed because we send demand letters out to delinquent owners and we've got to give them ample time to respond. And that's normally fruitful for us because we get a lot of taxes paid via that process. But just know that that's underway. We are real close, I think, to getting a sanitarian hired, which is exciting to replace Guy Crable. Guy Crables don't grow on trees, as you all know. That is a very difficult position to find, but we were real close. And so, hopefully, next week, we can, can make an announcement on that. Paul might talk about this more, but FCDC's annual meeting is over lunch today. And I know he's super excited about the turnout. That's why he looks so fancy today, I assume. And then, last thing, I've got Zach here from the Health Department wants to talk to you about a food drive opportunity that we may have next month, so.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, my name is Zachary Ray and I'm an intern from Baker University. And I'm working here at the Health Department. So, for part of my internship, I am currently working with the Connect Mobile Food Pantry, which is a subcommittee of the Franklin County Food Council. And we are currently partnered with USD 290, E Can, and Harvesters. Together, we provide quality nutritious foods to the elderly and rural families here in Ottawa and Franklin County who would not otherwise have access. However, due to staffing and supply chain shortages, we are unable to keep up with this growing demand. Therefore, my goals are to gather 12 community partners to sponsor food drives at their locations for each month of the upcoming year in 2023. After speaking with Derek Brown, we are optimistic in gaining the support from Franklin County. Therefore, we plan to run an internal food drive in the month of December, as this is a slower month for the Health Department. Thank you. And if you have any questions?
I used to serve on the Food Policy Council. I know this is always something we wanted to strive for, you know, to happen. And it was as difficult we found. And hopefully, you found an angle now to, to make that happen and it sounds like a good, good deal.
Thank you.
They're wanting to do 12 of them, so 12 different organizations would sponsor. And I think a lot of those may solicit donations from the community. That's, that's not what this is. This is an internal, I mean, certainly, we would take donations from the public, but we're not soliciting them. This is just, we're asking county employees if they wish to participate and provide. I mean, we'll have a list, but canned goods, just your normal food drive. There's no expectation on our part at all. It's just, but it's there. If, if folks want to give, then they'll have the opportunity.
We have an awesome organization. I'm looking forward to good participation.
Thank you so much.
Chris Diddy, you have something this morning? All right, Sheriff? No, Dustin?
No.
No? Amy, anything else? David?
I'll pick up the slack for everybody else. So, a couple of updates on the land acquisition out at the landfill. I spoke again with the Realtor and we're still waiting on the land survey to get completed so that deeds can be drawn up, so that we can close on that property. The Realtor anticipates that happening in November this month, but we'll see. I thought it would have happened quite some time ago, but we'll continue on. I do have, I did get permission for SES, our landfill engineers, to have a geotech crew on that property the week before Christmas to do some, some borings. We need to get, we need to know what the soil conditions are, how deep the rock is, those sorts of things for a couple of reasons. One, to know approximately how much borrow material might be available on site. And then also to know if, to determine if some of that property can be used in our footprint for the CND landfill expansion that we're currently underway. And so, that is going to happen. We've already approved the contract for that some time ago. That work will, again, occur the week before Thanksgiving. Also, myself and a couple of my other staff met with Evergy yesterday. They've got a number of projects that are ongoing in the county and then also a number of projects that are going to be occurring over the next couple of years. What they are doing is they're improving the system. We've got a lot of outdated lines, poles that need to be replaced, that sort of thing. And so, they are working really all over the county to make improvements, which will improve the, our power grid in this county, which in times of storm is a, is a big deal. So, these new lines will help improve those situations. The meeting was really about coming to some sort of understanding about our expectations on any construction within the right of way and to really understand their processes, which I think both parties came away with a lot more understanding. And I anticipate a closer working relationship going forward. And then, I want to talk just a little bit about the, you all just approved on the consent agenda, some additional culvert pipes. This time around, we plan to, we have been talking about the possibility of using the HDP pipe in to maybe replace the corrugated metal that we've always historically used. With this purchase that you all just approved, we're going to, the plan is, is to get approximately 20 pipes of 15-inch and 18-inch diameter, about 10 of each. And we're going to divide that up where we will get about half that number in the traditional corrugated metal and the other half, we're going to get in the HDP variety in order to begin testing, which will help kind of the continuation of the research that, that I've been doing. I've talked to a, a number of counties, a number of engineers and others in this industry. And I keep getting mixed, mixed signals. There is at least one county that has made the switch completely and that is due to the soil conditions that they have in their county that the metal pipes corrode very, very quickly. And they have gone to the HDP and they don't report any problems. The other folks that I visit with, other county supervisors, public works directors, county engineers that haven't used it, they're still hanging their hat on the fact that, you know, these, the, the plastic has issues if it's, catches direct sunlight, prone to burning, doesn't have the strength to hold up to the traffic and those sorts of things. I'm not sure if they are working on new information or old information. And so, research on my part is still ongoing. And as part of that research, we're going to have a product demonstration. Both Franklin County and the city of Ottawa have been considering these, this type of material. And so, we're going to have a vendor come down and, and present to us, they, you know, their pros and cons and, and give us, you know, some examples and references to other places where they've put this in. So, just wanted to let you know that this is a little bit unusual, but it's part of the research process. And I, you know, we'll, we'll place these plastic pipes in strategic locations to keep an eye on them, that sort of thing. If by chance, we do eventually like to go forward with utilizing this pipe more frequently, we will need to adjust our policies. And there's a resolution that would be involved to allow this type of pipe on a larger scale. So, just giving you a heads up that that may be something that comes before you at some point down the, down the line.
I know that Colt's always been interested in at least researching it. So, how does it? I know that Colt's always been interested in at least researching it, but so how does it compare pricewise?
That I'm not sure about. I, I, my suspicion is, is that it's a little bit more expensive, but I don't know that for, for fact. We'll find out here soon as a part of this, this process.
And it might just, it might depend on what kind of traffic you have or what the situation is on which one you're going to use?
Exactly. I, I would anticipate that there are going to be circumstances that would be favorable to using the HDPE and other circumstances that it would make no sense to use anything other than metal.
Awesome.
Big thing would be cover, wouldn't it?
Cover is, is a big part of it, absolutely.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
So early voting is going on right now. Yesterday was our largest day yet. We had 179 early voters yesterday in the office. We're over 1,000 early voters now. We wrapped up advanced ballots by mail yesterday, and we had around 750 advanced ballots by mail. So we're having a pretty good showing so far with the election. So we wrapped up our third training class yesterday of all of our election workers, but we still are looking for some people to be on our backup list and to fill a couple of late vacancies that we have that people have called to cancel. So if you know of anybody who is interested in being on our backup list to work the election, we would love to have them and, yeah, just working to keep all those positions filled, so.
When's the last day you can do the advanced ballot?
The advanced ballots by mail are done. To vote early, Monday at noon is the absolute last time you can vote early in the office. Other than that, you have to show up at your polling location on Tuesday.
All right. Busy time. All right, we'll go to, Paul Bean is no longer here, so I was going to call on him next, but we'll go to Don. Do you have anything today? Don Sotomayor?
Oh, we're going out to the, not ribbon cutting, but reopening, kind of like the Alfred Love's the other day, truck stop. And they've done a mural out there. If you go outside their building, and it designates several events going on in Ottawa, like it shows the courthouse. It shows the county fair. It shows the car show, and they've done a mural out there on the wall out there. It looked really nice. Local person done it. And Nick Baker is the manager out there, and he's a rural community type person. I know. I worked with him personally through the car show, and, and his people out there just went over backwards to help us with it. I mean, he volunteers himself and, and the staff to come down and help us down there. You know, just involved in the community, so I know I've heard a lot of people, good things about him, so. I hope, hope it isn't one of them deals every year, like them out there's kind of changed management. I'm hoping they'll change their mind with him because I think he's really good for the community. That's all I have.
I also attended the Chamber Coffee at Love's. Nick Baker is kind of a local guy. I think he came from Overbrook, so it was nice to have somebody like that here. And I commended them for staying open and keeping, you know, with, with how hard it is to hire people and, and they're, you know, keeping, keeping open, keeping business going. I did go to the hospital board last Thursday. I, you know, I, I just get, there's two sides to every story, and, and when you get lawyers and government regulations involved, it's not a simple process, so. I think the county would love to see a good resolution on that also, and we'll hopefully look forward to that. And then I went to the United Way meeting on Tuesday night. They are, I think anybody that's involved in fundraising after, through the pandemic realizes that it's harder and harder to raise money. Their, especially their corporate giving is down, and so they're looking at different options. One of the things that they're looking, hopefully that will help get them through the hump, is on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving is Giving Tuesday. So if you are thinking about giving to an organization, it's, it's a great group of people that are on that board. They are, every organization that they give to serves just Franklin County. So if you think about it on Giving Tuesday. And that is all I have besides FCDC dinner. Our offices are closed on November 11th for Veterans Day. I drove down Main Street today, and I, I love this time of year when there's all of the flags and all of the, Downing City Park and all of the enactments and. And then as I was coming back this way, I'm like, oh, the flags must go all the way to 7th Street. And then I'm like, oh, no, the flags actually go all the way down to 15th Street. So it's really cool. Drive down Main Street if you haven't. Support our vets. And unless anybody else has anything else, I would ask for a motion to.
Don't move.
All right.
So moved, and all in favor.